Hold that little tidbit to myself for now. Okay. Standing committee reports. Jack's not here. Tia, we know where we stand with personnel?
Yes. We'll start, I'm sure, negotiations soon.
Right. Did we set dates? Not yet, still?
No.
Okay. All right. So, aside from that policy, we just updated our field trip policy. Well, we will be later this evening. And I think that's it for policy. So, aside from that, I am going to turn it over to the superintendent for our presentation.
Thank you. First, I just want to let the board know that today we found out that we received the Community Investment Fund grant that we applied for several months ago.
Yay.
It's a $250,000 planning and facility study grant for Overbrook Early Learning Center, specifically to expand, study the facility, and get ideas for potential renovation and expansion of that site to make it more of a comprehensive community hub with the Family Resource Center as the foundation. So, that is really, really exciting. And it's plenty of money to really get a deep study going of the facility itself and how it could be renovated, expanded, built upon, to create a really energetic, vibrant community hub.
Nice.
Yeah, there's so many possibilities.
Great news.
Maybe community gardens.
Yeah, really, really exciting stuff. And that facility study then will become the basis for which we will apply for another round of community investment funding that could be, I mean, someone was awarded $10 million today for actual renovation projects. So, the study's really important. It is a requirement to come before you apply for the next round of funding. So, I feel like that pathway leads to lots of approvals.
Now, is it, so we're going to go out to bid, or is there any state recommend recommendations?
So, I think we're going to have to go out to bid technically. The town of East Haven was awarded the grant, even though the Board of Education side wrote it. It had to be signed off by the mayor. So, we might have to follow their bid procedures and go out to bid for some type of facility or architectural or engineering firm for the actual study.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there a timeline on that?
When we did it last time? When we had to have that study done for, with architectures and engineers?
With Silver and Petroselli, something similar to that. Maybe a little bit more comprehensive, might involve some perk tests. It might involve some, like, internal, behind-the-walls testing, soil samples, like, lots of different stuff if we're looking for a major renovation project. So, I don't have the exact timeline on it. We just found out, and they just voted on it today up at the Capitol. But we will certainly keep you posted and updated on any details that are forthcoming.
Okay.
And then, also, I'd just like to extend my sincere appreciation and gratitude to board members during Board Appreciation Month for everything that you do for our children, our faculty, our staff, and our community. Your advocacy on behalf of children does not go unnoticed, and we're very, very appreciative. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right.
And I'm going to turn it over to Adam, who has brought an incredible team from the Mawlin School, is going to share some really cool, exciting, and just like heartwarming, touching stuff to your soul this evening.
Thanks so much, Erica. Good evening, everyone. We wanted to be able to talk about the culture and climate within our school system that really creates the foundation for powerful learning to happen. A little bit of an outline, just a smidge on why culture and climate matter for academic achievement and growth, highlight a few different building-based efforts throughout the district. And then, we have a school spotlight with Mamawlin's Kind Campus. And so, we'll hear from Cory Ulet, Heather Top, and Julie Church tonight. So, when we think about the culture and climate within our schools, we know that the idea of students experiencing a sense of safety, belonging that comes from relational trust is really important for laying the groundwork for improved academic achievement and for them to be able to achieve really ambitious goals. And we also know that the school climate and the way that our staff feel coming to work and working with our children is really important for retention efforts and for overall growth in terms of the learning environment. But we also think about how it connects to our vision of the graduate. I think specifically, I connect this to the concepts of goal-directed and resilient individuals, like, building those skills, but also the confidence for our students to set ambitious goals and then to be able to persist in meeting and working through challenges. But also then thinking about who they are as responsible citizens. And a lot of times, that begins with fostering a sense of self-awareness first, so that they can understand who they are, where they fit within the community, and ultimately leverage their strengths for the community good. And that is really essential here in East Haven and our larger society. So, highlighting a few projects, wanted to start with some of our youngest learners at Dear Run. There's been really intentional efforts under the direction of Principal Laura Cattella around an inclusive learning environment and pre-K. So, we have certified pre-K special education teachers. But really amazing about this program, too, is the expansion of the Role Model Peer Program, where we are looking for students that can demonstrate age-appropriate skills in communication, social motor domains, because they end up being positive peer role models for their peers. And so, the beauty of it is children learning together, those exceptional learners with an individualized education plan and those without. And so, we'll be moving into that screening program, but just starting early to lay those academic foundations, but also a culture of inclusivity within our schools. Shifting to Farrar, we wanted to highlight their work around student motivation and engagement. So, they've linked this in their school to their SOAR expectations, so safety, ownership, achievement, and respect. And so, this is, they use their AL tickets in relationship to their PBIS SOAR expectations to be able to acknowledge when students are demonstrating those that are really high level, those exceptional qualities, and also to support students who are making growth towards those expectations along the way. And they've developed an incentive program that has both an immediate reward, but also builds deferred gratification, which is really important for students within a PBIS system around positive behavior supports. And so, the opportunity to say for monthly events. And the other piece we wanted to highlight here is that their incentives are actually designed to not only, like, be a reward for students, but they build community along the way. Their shared activities bring students who may not necessarily meet each other or know each other otherwise. And so, highlighted here, last year's Glow Party that's become a tradition within the school, and then last month's Pizza Party at John and Maria's that students earn the ability to go to. At East Haven Academy, they have worked to become a No Place For Hate. And so, represented here is some of the pledge linked to the Anti-Defamation League that No Place For Hate is linked to. But here, unique is that staff, students, and families work together on a shared council to design and implement experiences for students, really aimed at challenging bias and bullying within their day-to-day lives. Featured is an activity they did, Hands United Against Hate. And this is happening across all grade levels, grade one through eight. And they have recently incorporated two where students are recognized in front of peers through their monthly Town Hall system, so calling out students who stand up and do the right thing within the school setting. And finally, before shifting to our school spotlight, I also wanted to circle back to Tuttle. When, let's see, a few meetings ago, we talked about Tuttle's efforts around family engagement in regards to our East Haven literacy model. And since then, they've had two more events. And they've really thought about the school-home learning connections and how to bring families and staff and students together in some really creative learning activities. So, their engagement events have been designed to foster learning and community at school, an opportunity to meet, like, your child's friends and to get to know their family. The top two pictures feature an event that they just re-initiated, which is a STEM Night that they held on Valentine's Day. And so, students were working on their foundational knowledge, but also fact fluency in math, and helping families to understand how a deck of cards or a set of dice can really be both fun and support students' math learning. The bottom pictures also represent, Chris Brown designed another event for the Connecticut Literacy Model, featured around graphic novels and using it to help students with sequencing. So, beautiful here is that you see families reading together and also writing stories together in the genre of graphic novels. So, thinking about how culture and climate is also about those relationships of learning between school and home. And so, want to turn things over now to have our representatives from Mamawlin talk about their Kind Campus initiative and how they're fostering engaged, empathetic community of learners.
Thank you.
We'll kick off with a little video.
Yeah, we're going to play a video. I'm Cory Ulet, I'm a social worker.
Heather Top, I'm a social worker.
And we're just going to start with a video that a bunch of our students worked on, and we're going to talk about it after.
What does kindness mean to you?
Kindness helps us to have friends. When we are kind, the people want to play with us.
When we are kind, the people want to play with us.
The best part about being kind is that it makes people around you feel happy.
Kindness means being nice to others, like sharing your thoughts or helping someone out of their hurt.
Hey, it's nice to help. Sure. Thank you.
Kindness is helping others without expecting anything in return, like holding the door for someone or giving them a smile.
Thank you.
Kindness means treating others the way they love to be treated.
If you want people to be nice to you, you should be nice to them, too.
I love that.
Kindness is helping with good and bad.
Being supportive.
Listening.
And caring for each other!
Kindness is letting someone feel happy or safe, like inviting them over to play or cheering them up when they're sad.
Hey, Steven, do you want to play?
Yeah.
Kindness is saying something kind, like, to help someone feel like they're greater or saying, "I'm a good teacher."
Thank you.
Why do you think kindness is good?
Kindness makes people happy.
When you are kind to them, you make their day better.
Kindness can solve problems. And kindness can also fix things if you're disagreeing.
Kindness helps us make friends.
When we're kind, people like playing with us.
Kindness makes people feel really good and try to put on kind, not feeling really good.
Kindness makes us laugh and get it, when we help each other to do more.
Yeah!
Kindness makes people feel happy.
Kindness helps people have more respect.
Why do you think people should practice kindness?
Kindness is like a genie.
I'm a peer leader, so I inspire others to be kind, too.
If everybody was kind, the world would be a very nice.
Kindness shows we care. When we practice kindness, we show people we care and we want to help them.
What's the hardest thing about being kind?
Sometimes it's hard to be kind when I'm upset.
When I'm angry or frustrated, it's hard to be kind enough to others.
It can be hard to share.
Sometimes I don't want to share my feelings, but it's the kind thing to do.
It's hard when others aren't kind to me.
It's tough to be nice when someone is being mean, but we should still try to be kind.
It's hard to be kind when I don't feel like helping, when I try to do it anyway because I know what's important.
How do you feel when someone shows you kindness?
When someone shows me kindness, I feel happy.
I feel special.
I feel excited.
I feel thankful.
It makes me want to be kind.
We feel loved.
Are you going to show the bloopers?
No, we're going to shift over to talking a little bit about the foundation and the work they're engaged in.
Okay, so, through that video, you saw a lot of our members of what we call the Kindness Council, which Heather will talk about in a little bit, displaying some of the ways that they feel about kindness. And really, how this all started was through an initiative that we started at the beginning of last school year called Ben's Bells Project. And it's about a kind campus, is what we call it. So, last year, that really pigstarted it, and we used a lot of their curriculum to support in each classroom, so kindergarten through fifth grade. And all of this curriculum was wonderful, and it was already adapted for those specific grade levels, and created different opportunities for whole-school engagement as well as individual class engagement, and then on an individual basis of how to show kindness, how it's hard to be kind sometimes. And so, laid a really great foundation. So, this year, we tried to adapt it to the best of our ability, to use some of that foundation that we had last year, but to create it to be our own, to kind of cultivate a foundation that our Mamawlin students were needing and meet the needs of our students individually. So, you'll see here, these are pictures of our kindness superheroes. So, we had an assembly, and the theme was kindness superheroes. So, everyone here is a kindness superhero. And this was the kindness pledge that we read aloud. And so, every day, we featured a new kindness superhero who was a student, who got to wear a mask and a cape for the whole day. And so, this is something that we really urge our students to pay attention to now on a daily basis since that assembly happened about a month and a half ago.
Yeah, I mean, biggest piece to point out is that there was, there was a spark last year with the Ben's Bells Project. And I think that this assembly is what kind of, now, there's like a reignition almost, like, the spark has, it's taken. That first picture in the beginning of the little girl holding the necklace, she ran out of her car in the morning to show that. This was after the assembly. So, I think that the kids are really going home and thinking about the purpose and what is, what does it mean to be kind, not only in school, but in the community? So, with that, starting last year, we initiated the Kind Council, Kindness Council. So, this is grades three to five. We meet on a biweekly basis. We get together and we collaborate and talk about maybe different projects that we can do in the community. There's student-led initiatives, definitely fosters and empowers growth with empathy and goodwill and how to give back to our community. So, last year, we started with 22 members. This year, we have 35 members, and that is really not because kids aren't asking to be a part of this. I think we're trying to figure out how we can really have a touch point for more students. Since that assembly, kids were running up to us. I think they looked at that video and said, "That could be me." There was a spark, there was a desire and admiration for those kids up on the screen. How can I be a part of something greater? So, this year, we raised items for the local animal shelter. We wrote letters and sent treats to the former fifth-grade students who are now at the middle school. So, that was a nice treat to show them that you are, you are, and will always be an orca and stay connected to the elementary community. We wrote letters to people affected in, with the California wildfires. Valentine's bags for the neighbors, which was wonderful. You'll see in the next slide that there are pictures of the students working on those bags. We delivered them within the neighborhood, left them on doorsteps. We had neighbors reach out through the Good Things About East Haven website, our personal Facebook page. We've received letters that we read to the students, and you can tell that they were really touched. And I think the fact that we can circle back around and they can hear the voices of those who did receive those gifts and felt touched by it, you can hear a pin drop in the room. It was really, it was really nice. So, that was the Valentine's bags. Next up, we are going to be working on the school garden. So, if you see that next picture, those are pictures of the items from the animal shelter. We ran into a police officer on our way around the neighborhood. We had an extra bag, gave him the bag. He was very grateful and appreciative of that. Peer leaders is something that we've had going since 2022. This is grades four and five students. So, we see that the Kindness Council, we were able to have a greater touch point. We expanded it from grades three, three and up. Here, our target group was mainly fourth and fifth students, possibly with lower self-esteem, maybe not so much socially connected, attendance concerns, and then the flip side, also, students who are doing well. We don't want to forget about those students, the ones that are doing well, are role models in the classroom. So, I think all kids can see that they have this opportunity, this chance to be a part of something great. Within this mission statement, it says, "Our peer leaders inspire others to make a difference in the, in the world." In our kind video, one of the students held up his badge and said, "I'm a peer leader. I inspire others to be great, too." That was on his own. I thought that was so cool that he was able to do that, and they're thinking of that themselves.
Yeah, like a badge of honor. Yeah, I, I noticed that in the video. He, like, picked it up, and he was proud of it.
Very proud.
Absolutely.
Their roles, so they're work buddies, so they go into lower-grade classrooms, they help initiate tasks, they can make copies for the teacher, transition buddies from classroom to classroom, they can initiate social connectedness during recess and so forth. So, we had, we have 16 kiddos from fourth grade and 16 from, from fifth grade. And they are working in pairs, which is, within the last year and a half, an additional bonus on top of what we were doing before, just sending the kids as single, having single classrooms to go to. It's one other way to connect them with each other.
So, when we look at the long-term benefits of being a peer leader, I think there's benefits for both the older kids who are able to be involved in something like this, but also the younger kids. I spend most of my time with the younger kids, and to see their energy change, their excitement when peer leaders walk in the room. I can't tell you how many second graders are already asking, "How can I be a peer leader?" So, they have that to look forward to, which I think is something that's so great that was created. But some of the long-term, and even, like I said, short-term benefits of this is enhancing some critical thinking skills for these kids. So, they have an opportunity in the moment to critically think about different situations, whether it be socially or even academically, to be able to assist the younger kids and be a great role model. Builds confidence and a sense of belonging. We're going to touch on the handout that I passed out earlier, but even in this handout, you can see their sense of self and their sense of confidence that they have after leaving this program really does increase, strengthening their peer relationships across grade levels, right? So, this is a school-wide initiative, so all grades are involved in this. Some are just in leadership roles. Continues to build their work ethic and increases their adaptability and their empathy with others. I think they're able to see a lot as these kids are getting older and they go back into the classrooms, they're able to re-establish those connections with their teachers, and they're able to establish connections with the younger kids and kind of take on a, like an older brother-sister role to these kids in the hallway, which fosters a great sense of community for us.
Yeah, the appeal, it's this exclusive club that, that they, you know, are working so hard to get into. What does that mean for me? How do I, how do I make that happen? So, the, the peer leaders shift three times a year. So, every three months or so, a new cycle goes out. We try to get everyone that opportunity to earn. There is definitely accountability there. They know that, I had one student write, "I love having a job." It is like a job. We are teaching them also skills of what it's going to look like in, in the workplace. You have to be responsible, you have to finish things before you move on to the next. If you can't make your shift, I've had students go ahead and tell their teachers they can't make a shift today, shaking hands, introducing themselves. So, those things that we sometimes don't realize are, are those basic needs are being touched upon in these areas. So, that, that exclusivity to want to be a part of something is definitely hitting there. Panorama results in the areas of responsible citizen, goal-directed resilient individual, and a resourceful problem solver. I think just even taking a peek at the screen, we see we're, we're all over 90% with different things. For example, do you have a teacher, an adult you can count on to help you? 94%, yes. Do you work with others to solve problems? 88%. Do you listen to feedback and try to make changes when needed? 98%. I think you, you all have handouts of coming straight from, from the children. They have surveys passed out to them, pre-surveys. How are they feeling? That's in the back of your packet. How are they feeling before they start peer leading? And then, at the end of their time as peer leaders, they're letting me know whether or not there's been a shift. Over 80% success rate with feeling connected to their school community and feeling better about themselves. One of the big things that I noticed that I also put in here are, just write down two words to describe yourself. Very difficult for a lot of the students in the beginning. By the end, I had, I had students filling out their paper, helping each other to come up with those words together. So, I think by the end of it, the self-esteem has just, it's plummeting. It's plummeting through, through areas such as this. Not plummeting, increasing. Wrong word. Future plans, okay. Actually, you're right here.
Yeah, so, honestly, it was really hard for us to come up with specific, just a few of the things that we do for school climate. I think the staff at Mamawlin is really integrated in all of this, and so, recognition is due there. And so, there's so many different initiatives that are done in the school by different individuals. But these are just a few of the other ones that we've been really working on. The first one is in relation to the kindness superheroes. Heather and I do the morning announcements, and now, instead of a child getting announced as a kindness superhero and they get to wear a mask and a cape, two students are recognized every day for being extremely kind or showing some sort of leadership, and they get to spin the kindness wheel. So, on this wheel are PBIS orca tickets, there are prize boxes, things of that sort that get the kids really excited to come down to the office and get that recognition. We also have a kindness challenge every day. So, over the announcements, we'll announce the kindness challenge. I think today's was play with someone new at recess, or tell the lunch ladies, "I hope you have a great day." And, I mean, kids just absorb it. They love it, they come up to us. "I did the kindness challenge, what's tomorrow?" So, I just think it really increases the positive energy in, in climate and culture at our school. The middle is the kindness egg. Coming up, we'll be starting that. This is just an egg that's placed around the school. In it, it will have a kind note that they can choose to write to a friend, a teacher, or a family member, as well as an orca ticket and a sticker. And this is great because everyone in the school is looking for the egg. So, it's K through five, and everyone finds it, probably have like three a day, who come and get the egg, and they're running to us, which is awesome. And then, finally, you'll see, part of our PBIS is they can cash in orca tickets to be a bus line helper. So, this is any age. So, this is kindergarten through fifth grade, and they're able to take responsibility during a very chaotic time of the day, and they get these wonderful lanyards that say, "Bus Line Helper," and they can hand out orca tickets to peers who they see doing a really nice job. They can tell friends to, like, get back in their line. It's been a really great opportunity for kids of all ages in our school to show leadership.
Future plans, I had mentioned before, we want to start creating that culture of once an orca, always an orca. So, coming up this year, we're working towards a initiative called Gearing Up for Sixth Grade. So, we'll be, we've already invited eight former fifth graders, so now it's sixth grade, to come back and sit on a panel for the fifth graders and talk about their experiences in middle school. This will be opened up to families as well. So, we'll have the sixth graders coming on the panel. Once the panel is complete in a 45-minute period or so, then we're opening up for our alumni to come back for the day for snacks. We'll have t-shirts and things is, is our, is our plan. I, I think the purpose is to bridge that gap between elementary and middle school and stay connected with one another for future time.
And then, future plans, just in general, for culture and climate, I think we have a lot of ideas that stem off of the ones that we've already shared. Wanting more family engagement, family surveys and feedbacks specifically regarding the Kindness Council students, as well as the peer leaders. What's working well for your student? What did your student really enjoy? What are some things they're coming home saying? Things of that sort. Having an after-school group would be wonderful to be able to reach more kids. Like we said, we want to be able to reach as many kids as we can possible. The school day is only so long. So, that's another possible idea. Having some peer-led mini-workshops, so having the peer leaders really take ownership and maybe even training younger kids. How, how do you show leadership? How do you show responsibility? And then, also giving them an opportunity to push in with me to some classrooms to do some lessons in SEL, whether it be about, like I said, responsibility or leadership. And finally, some possible monthly leadership meetings with the peer leaders altogether, continuing to partner with community members of different occupations, families, et cetera. And then, also connecting across school. So, I think that the gearing up for sixth grade is awesome, and we actually have an intern with us right now who goes to East Haven High School, who is a part of the peer mentor program at the high school, and she was just telling us about this. And so, we're planning for, to have her to speak to the fifth graders about what peer mentoring looks like, how they have that to look forward to. So, I think she has already been a really great asset for us. And then, thanks to Adam and Lisa, who taught us how to track the individual students on Panorama, putting them in groups, and so, to really see the progress, social, emotionally, and even academically, that some of these groups of students can have based on the programs that they've been a part of.
Julie, you've rolled out, like, family learning walks alongside of this as an additional, like, school-home connection. I didn't know if you could, like, briefly share a little bit of that?
I think that the two work so well, and the information that comes from the, the learning walk actually helps to feed some of this work. So, this year, I think I mentioned it once before, we initiated learning walks. We've had from two individuals to 14 individuals show up. It's scheduled once a month, open to any family member to attend. It's usually centered around a theme. Last month's theme was to come to Mamawlin to learn about PBIS. Last month's theme was to come to Mamawaguan to learn about PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventional Support, which, um, this totally fits into our PBIS sys- system. And it was very enlightening when the adults who came, the family members and caregivers that came, shared, um, not really what I was expecting to hear, but I'm thankful that they, um, were there to provide that to, to kind of set us up in, on a new path in a new direction. So they were concerned that the students may not be feeling that it's equitable, feeling that the orca tickets that we use as an incentive are distributed, um, across all areas. And, you know, they had a lot of good feedback. Which then led to us creating a student version of a quick ten-question survey to see what students need, a family survey to see the perception of all families, um, and a staff survey. So our staff survey branched off into our professional learning day on the twenty-first. We're gonna be revisiting PBIS to make it so that it's more equitable. Equitable doesn't always mean equal, but, um, how we can address that. And the student and family surveys are out, but we'll, we will review those and it will help, uh, drive our work. I think that the, the kindness initiative looks a lot like, um, a No Place for Hate initiative, right? It's just that the, the language is a little different in the elementary. But another reason that this was re, um, we had a little spark to reignite this is because of some situations that, that came, came up where students were being unkind to each other. And how we do that tier-one approach so that all students know what is the right thing to do. Where are we teaching the expectations? What expectations do we need to reteach? And where can we put our focus, uh, of our day? The kindness is amazing. The feel in the building is absolutely wonderful. I welcome anyone to come in. I'm telling you, you will feel it when you walk in. Our kids are just caring, empathetic, um, wonderful students and, uh, could not be happier and more proud of the staff, especially led by, um, these two who have done an amazing job, um, kicking it off and, and battling through it. Thank you, and, um, thank you.
So I just wanna ju- sh- share an appreciation. It takes a lot to balance this level of work on culture and climate while keeping the focus on learning. And you could easily see how some of these initiatives could inner, like, could compete with learning time, but the parameters that you've set in place to make sure that students are remaining in good standing, that you're balancing and thinking about their holistic schedule, and really leaning into transition times, lunch, dismissal, um, I think is, is really critical. And it shows a, a, an emphasis on the proactive measures rather than waiting to have to be responsive later on. So, um, kudos and thank you. Yeah.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that was absolutely incredible, and I just wanna thank you for your expertise and level of knowledge in developing a program like that and the leadership you engaged in to actually get it off the ground. There's a lot going on here. You know, when you, when you listen to that, you're thinking about these executive functioning skills. We talk about the vision of the graduate. We talk about these Fortune 500 companies looking for people who care about each other, who can collaborate and communicate, get along with each other, shake someone's hand, look them in the eye, and be responsible individuals by showing up to work on time. And all of that is embedded at such a high level there. I just think that the work is incredible. And I was at Mamawaguan to read very frequently, and you can feel the kindness seeping through the hallways of the building. And it's just, um, super refreshing, and I'm really proud and grateful for the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to our COFO.
Thank you again for coming.
Thank you very much. We are dropping right now.
Yes, I will open up two questions for anybody from the field.
RJ, I have a question, um, about the furnace at Mamawaguan. How old is that furnace?
So one is within five years old. That's the newer. There are two boiler systems. There one is steam boiler and one is gas boiler.
So which one is the one that was being repaired here?
Steam boiler. That's the oldest.
How old is that?
To the addition of that building, so.
The sixties?
It's had some upgrades, but it's a complete overhaul.
Was it sixties?
Wow.
I don't know. It's one of the, the new wing from the.
Oh, the new wing.
I think my husband was.
That was probably the seventies.
Yes, it was the seventies, 'cause.
Seventies. That's still pretty old. I don't think, there's, there's a house that has a furnace in the seventies. That's pretty old. What's, is this, that's a, is that a capital project, replacing a furnace?
Yeah, so a new boiler in running anywhere from one fifty to three hundred.
So is that something that we're gonna bring to the town?
Um, we could, yes. That, those similar repairs were related to the incident we had, where there was a surge in the UI line that created, um, sparking a system. But yes, and there is a major overhaul coming that has been approved during the cap over waiting for the heat to warm again. Need needed, so it may comes along.
At Mamawaguan? So is, is it, it's not a new furnace, though. It's just a Band-Aid. Yeah, that's kinda, we got, we have to, we have to do better than that. We really do.
It's a capital request.
Yes, we do. Because, I mean, you get a new furnace, it's gonna be more efficient. You're not gonna get repairs.
So what, this surge, right? Is there, there was a surge?
Yeah.
I mean, look at what this cost. And this was just one.
Is the UI responsible?
I think I've seen Mamawaguan on here a few times this year.
I'm trying to think of a good way to put it.
Yeah. And it's gonna keep happening.
Just simultaneously when something else was in, wasn't it?
That's all I have.
We can move on to cafeteria report and the medical report. Medical reports had a good month of February. It's an actual positive sign. Our weekly bills have slightly decreased since this time. Hopefully, we have a run where that slows down a little bit so we can catch a breath for the medical claim coming through. Again, we're still over projected from where we are, so any positive months will be a large difference.
So realistically, do we have any money in the fund? Like, the health insurance fund?
Reserve fund?
Yes.
No, reserve was there.
Yes, but do we have money to cover our expenses this month?
This month, yes.
Okay.
What was the, the projection for like the last, like, the remaining months last year? Is that what you're thinking?
So we are projec- so basically, it's something pretty good in October. At least they will be getting some aid here on to be used to transfer over to public medical and use other general fund from the operations, the public medical, as far as we can get through, through the end of the year. We had that discussion with town hall. We'll put that in writing to them so they'll know where we stand.
I hate to be taking resources from the students to pay medical.
Agreed.
That's what we're kind of being forced to do.
It's not.
Unfortunately.
And we can go off of last year's projections, but this year is in such an anomaly of the increase. We can use it as a basis, but the weekly bills have varied. We've gotten a bill for one week that was four hundred thousand dollars, or we, we've gotten one that was seventy-five thousand dollars for me. So they are varying week to week. We get, um, every Wednesday, we get the Monday bill. That's gonna come on our account. So Wednesday, so Friday, so I can see how we have a few days to figure it out. New services heading in the right direction, management changes, and, um, staffing has improved. We're gonna see some positive input from month to month as we continue throughout the year. I believe we changed that input today, both with management and some items that we have changed on our end. We have turned a corner. It should be able to become positive, um, in the coming months to end this year. Looking forward to the future to get back on par with our goals.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Move on to acceptance of meeting minutes from our February twenty-fifth regular meeting. If there's any requested revisions or objections? We will accept the meeting minutes if there's no opposition. Move to audience of citizens. Is there anyone here who would like to speak this evening? Getting an orderly line? Yes, they're still working that, I don't know, lineup out back there, but, so. All right, no.
Four getting biddy banquet tickets, so they're late.
They're late, they're late. Okay. So we will move on. Six point one. Discussion on Possible Action on the Revision of Policy Six One Five Three Field Trips. As, as discussed earlier. Nobody's making gestures. I'm just checking, see if anyone's choking. All right, does, eh, could, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the revision of policy number six one five three field trips.
Second.
Okay. So opening up for questions, comments? Everyone's pretty much on board. All right, then I'm gonna say roll call vote.
Well, well, I thought we were gonna, we, is that with some revisions that we talked about?
Well, that's why I asked him. Any questions or comments?
We're striking through.
A student on the second page.
Right, on the second page.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it?
That we discussed.
That was the only. Yeah, we discussed it earlier.
That was the only additional revision. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr., uh, Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Six point two. Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of the Purchase of an Advertisement for the East Haven High School Drama Club Play Bill. I believe this would fit into our parameters on, uh.
How much is the advertisement?
It is a hundred dollars for a full-page black and white, fifty dollars for a half-page black and white, twenty-five dollars for a business card or quarter-page black and white, and a booster is a max of twenty-five words for five dollars.
And this comes out of rentals?
Yes.
Anyone have any other clarifiers before we, motion? No? Motion?
I will make a motion, um, well, I'll just say one more. Uh, make a motion to approve the hundred-dollar advertisement for the East Haven High School Drama Club Play Bill.
Thank you. Second.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So at this time, do I have any questions or comments on the motion put forward?
No.
All right, then. Motion to purchase a hundred-dollar ad for the East Haven High School Drama Club Play Bill for prom. Roll call, please.
Mr. Palmer? I thought you said for prom?
Yeah, that's the name of the play.
So sorry. Um, yes. I'm, I'm very tired.
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That brings us to six point three. Discussion on Possible Action on the Approval of East Haven High School Out-of-State Field Trip Request to Johnson and Wales University in Providence, Rhode Island on April ninth. Are there any clarifiers before we go forward? Or should we, is it something that you would ask in? Maybe motion first and then?
Motion first and then?
Unless it's anything specific that's missing that you would need to make a motion.
I don't think it will affect them, or it might affect the outcome, but it doesn't affect.
I make a motion to approve the East Haven High School Out-of-State Field Trip Request to Johnson and Wales University in Providence, Rhode Island on April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Just going back to what we talked about with field trips. This has forty students and seven chaperones.
Yeah.
I see four chaperones.
Because it's not consistent.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, because these two pages don't.
Yeah, it's not consistent.
Oh, it, it is four. I'm sorry. It is four chaperones.
But if you look later on.
It's not, it's not seven. Sarah Costa told me before that there was a discrepancy in the paperwork. It is four.
Okay, but there's also a discrepancy in the time that they're leaving. It's, it's almost a two-hour trip up and two-hour trip back. They're only there for a very, you know.
Yep.
I, I don't know. I, I.
It's the same field trip that they went on last year. It is a little bit of a drive, but I believe the experience was fulfilling and, and worthwhile. I could bring it back to the board if you have different questions or you need something else clarified.
Well, the paperwork ju- is just very sloppy. It's, it's really, really, this, this very, this top page does not match the second page, which also doesn't quite match the, the.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. We can bring it back.
Yeah.
I'm cleaning up and we'll bring it back.
Do you have time, though? I mean.
I mean, it's part of the process, so, and the expectation to make sure that everything aligns. So we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Yeah, the trip is April ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have to make sure that the paperwork is right.
Yeah.
So what does our policy say timeframe? When does it have to be approved? How far?
Well, that's, we won't be under that new timeframe, because this is for April ninth, I believe.
Yeah, this should've been brought up a month ago.
Right. So my fear is if we don't do anything tonight, that's it, because we're gonna be outside of our guidelines for approving.
We already are.
So why don't we amend the motion to be contingent, like, contingent upon the correct timeline being?
Well, no, we don't need to do that. We could just waive the policy. Have we've done a million times that section right before we would have to approve it.
I mean, we already know this is coming. Add something, 'cause that's not, you know. That's what I mean. You could just amend this to, in front of adding, like, making a motion to add onto the agenda.
So how many chaperones? Does he have four?
I know, but I'm saying we have to waive the policy.
He doesn't know why Johnson and Wales put seven on the, their side of the paperwork. It was always four, originally four.
Yeah.
I think the time discrepancy, the, the form says departure, estimated time of return is noon. I think they're repeating Johnson and Wales again, because the extent of their return to college.
That makes sense.
From the university says departure at eleven thirty.
Yes.
They've done dining at.
Yes, it does say that.
At Johnson and Wales at eleven thirty, that would kind of get everybody back on the bus and on the way.
Which makes more sense.
So I think they're probably back here around two o'clock at the end of the school day.
So he put approximate time of return, the time that he was leaving.
Starting the return process.
Yeah, yeah, this paperwork's mess.
Today's making it thirty days. I mean, today's what, the eleventh? I mean, two days short.
Listen, I think if the expectation is that the paperwork comes to the board, filled out properly and thoroughly, then we should stick to that expectation. And so we'll bring it back at the end of March, and the field trip is a couple, couple of weeks later. We'll have them still plan on the field trip. And if the paperwork is returned in alignment and coherent across the board, then the board can approve it and they can proceed with the field trip.
Okay. We will have to waive the requirement.
Yep.
Yeah, that's forty-five days.
Yep.
Erica, can you remind me, how did we get the partnership with Johnson and Wales specifically?
Last year was the first.
I was just curious how the partnership came to be.
I was just curious how the partnership could be.
They have their own program.
Yes.
As do we.
Hence the relationship. So, perfect. We'll take no action on that item. Not a problem at all.
Sounds good. That brings us to six point four, discussion and possible action on the request of asset disposal for technology equipment.
So we have, this is a list of our IP apartment buildings that are being, they are decreasing in the building, and the district is, this is a place for old lighting to come in, for the [inaudible]. So every two months, our tech apartment will go through this and see what's obsolete and no longer be used for parts, or we agree, purpose, we send out in circulation, so we're seeing [inaudible] of that product, of what can no longer be used, or cannot be used for [inaudible].
Motion?
Make the motion to allow for the asset disposal for technology equipment.
Second.
All right, so at this time, anybody have any specific questions on asset disposals? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Dr. Dulusha?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to remind everyone, our next meeting is Tuesday, March twenty-fifth. And also mark in your calendars that on the twenty-seventh will be the mayor's, what is it, state of address. Always interesting, we'll be front row, people. Everyone join. I'll bring popcorn, and we'll have a good time.
Tomorrow, we are also presenting the budget to the Board of Finance at six thirty in the evening.
Is that, is that open for public?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is, right? Yeah.
It's a very small.
Small room, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And as always, if you have any items that you would like added to the agenda, to please let us know, so we can ensure that we have all the information that we would need in order to fully present that topic to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Done.